Martin Dale.
Here.
Schreiner.
Here.
Caldwell.
Here.
Now, I entertain a motion to adopt the mates of general. So move Schreiner. Do you have a second? Roll call please. Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Martin Dale.
Yeah.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes. The minutes from last month's or last time meeting are actually posted on our board docs. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes. So move. Thank you, Bozo. A second.
Second.
Any additions, corrections, anything to those?
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
It's Johnson.
Yeah.
It's Martin Dale.
Yeah.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes. Any board reports tonight? All right, here none. We're going to move public participation relative to agenda items. And first is Denise D'Angelo Steele. Talking about Ohio High School Athletics.
I start in the new star or like timeline, how's it go?
Yeah, when you start timer start, you'll hear a beep that'll be your warning and then we'll use again that's good.
It'll be like thirty second warning or a minute thirty. Why do I get the whole minute? Thank you, everyone, for allowing me this opportunity to talk about the Southwestern City School District's topic of being a member of the Ohio High School Athletic Association. I'd like to ask some questions before it's decided that the Southwestern City School District will approve this. What other options are there as a district? Do they have the same, what other memberships are available to the district? Do they have the same policies as the Ohio High School Athletic Association? Why is Southwestern City School District a member of the Ohio High School Athletic Association? Is it because the level of competition that is offered within the membership? Has everyone on the board had the opportunity to look over the new policies of Title IX? Has everyone been able to digest how the Ohio High School Athletic Association is adopting these policies? I ask these questions because I want everyone to be aware of the impact this decision will have on the future of many. To allow boys and girls to play in the same school sports team is not a good idea, especially for this age group, which needs to be discussed, needs to be discussed and thought thoroughly to cover all situations. So I understand that there are unique situations, of course. In some cases, there are not enough interested athletes to form a female team. I understand that. In this case, allowing female athletes to play in the male team may be necessary. However, if there are just four offered for males and females, there's no need for a female to be on the male team. The Ohio Health, that's a difference. The Ohio High School Athletic Association states that their policy that all rules, regulations, facilities, score, and supervision of interscholastic athletic programs should ensure maximum protection of the health, safety, and well-being of each participant. Safety and well-being of each participant, those are their words. Allowing a male to compete in a female's shop, for example, does not help anyone. However, it does hurt, it is hurting those at the higher professional level right at this moment. There's no way a female can compete with a male. Not only feelings are going to be hurt, we are talking about scholarship opportunities that may be lost, sponsorships in the future. If the males that are competing in female sports had the opportunity to compete on a co-ed team, for example, the females wouldn't be threatened at any level. Women's rights have come a long way in this country. Seeing all the hard work of those women before me hitting a long going backwards hurts my heart and makes me very afraid for our future. Reading over the change gender policy in the Ohio High School Athletic Association Guide breaks my heart on so many levels. The humans that are being referenced to are so, so young. You know, the Ohio Athletic, Ohio High School Athletic Association references grade seven through twelve. So seventh graders is young as for the twelve, twelve are the up to eighteen year olds. They have their entire lives ahead of them. Instead of forcing these young people to make choices that will have a lifelong effect on them is unacceptable for adults to do this. Another option for these young athletes, and that will have an impact on the professional world, hopefully in the future, would be to offer a co-ed team for those who may not be planning on going to that next little play, however, would still like to play in a school sport. There's no need for a child who does not want to be a boy and wants to be a girl to take hormone blockers that he may play with the girls. Let the kids be kids, create a co-ed team that anyone can play on. In the Ohio High School Athletic Association transgender guidelines, it states that before a transgender female can participate in girls' sports or on a girls' team, she must either have completed a minimum of one year hormone treatment related to gender transition, demonstrate to the executive director's office by way of sound medical evidence that she does not possess physical bone structure, muscle mass, or testosterone, or hormone, et cetera, anything related to the male body, or psychological advantages over genetic females of the same age group. With that being said, having all this that needs to be met for a non-birth gender to participate on another gender team who doesn't need to happen, no one should have to undergo hormone therapy to play and have fun, offer a co-ed team. Keep the higher level competitive teams for those who are wanting to form at that level, male and female, let males and females have their own teams. Not just the women wanted the teams to be separate. If you look back in history, the females were all about playing with the males. However, the men said, no, we don't want them playing with us because they may be better than us and eventually humiliate us. The women said, okay, we shall do our own thing. Don't take that away from them. Some things can stay the same while others change. You know, my time is almost done. I know this policy may not be in effect here in Southwestern City School District, and that's okay. But please address this topic in depth before making any decisions that may have a lifelong impact. I'm more than one person. There are solutions to every problem. There's no way to make everyone happy. However, there is a way to allow everyone to play school sports in a safe and healthy environment that everyone can enjoy.
No further public participation relevant to agenda items. Now we're going to move to Mr. Schreiner for a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lots happening at the State House. I will highlight a few of the important items. The entire report will be attached to tonight's minutes, so bear with me. The Ohio House began work on the biennial budget. The House Finance Committee started work on fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five biennial budget with testimony from the Office of Budget and Management Director, Kim Murneeix, and I probably butchered that name, who provided detailed information on Governor Mike DeWine's budget proposal. The governor had outlined his proposal of the state of the state on January thirty-first and included several education-related provisions, including continuing the phase in of of year three and four of the Fair School Funding Plan, providing funding for any public or private schools that wants to hire a school resource officer, providing one hundred million dollars to launch new in-demand career tech programs and industry-recognized credential programs across the state, increasing the eligibility for EdChoice vouchers up to four hundred percent of the federal poverty level, requiring the Ohio Department of Education, ODE, to create professional development coursework rooted in evidence-based strategies for effective literacy instruction and provide funding to schools and districts to incorporate the literacy training in their classrooms, requiring ODE to support up to one hundred additional literacy coaches in schools and districts with the lowest reading proficiency, continuing funding for tutoring services, providing additional college credit plus funding to provide additional training for teachers to instruct classes on high school campuses. The members of the House Finance Committee asked several questions of the director regarding the Fair School Funding Plan, EdChoice vouchers, and the funding of school resource officers. Governor DeWine's budget proposal includes the creation of the Department of Children and Youth, a new department that will move numerous programs from other departments to be housed under the new department. Legislators questioned the director on what programs would fall under the new department and what would remain with ODE. The director stated the early childhood education would move to the new department, but all K through twelve programs would stay at the Ohio Department of Education. The Legislative Service Commission has drafted the governor's budget proposal into bill language, and the bill will be introduced in the near future. The seven subcommittees of the House Finance Committee will soon be holding committee meetings to delve deeper into the bill's language. The education-related items of the bill will be considered in the Finance Subcommittee on Primary and Secondary Education. The Chair of the House Finance Committee, Representative Edwards, outlined the proposed budget timeline in the House with the goal of passing the bill out of the House Finance Committee by the end of April. Also, the bill to reform the ODE introduced in the Ohio Senate, and that was referred to as one seventy-eight at one time, and you'll be hearing more about that. All of the rest of those, and there are many, many new bill proposals, and they will all be part of my report if you choose to read it in our minutes. Thank you, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiner. Next, we will go to Student Staff Chief on the Board with Ms. Martin Dale.
Everybody, I've got many things, such as the ways that we're doing a lot of good things, so I'm excited to talk about them. First of all, congratulations to Cole from McKinney from Franklin Heights, Scarlett Virgins from Central Crossing, and Keegan Holstrom from Grove City High School, and Dominique Book into Central Crossing, thanks for being named to the twenty twenty-three Handshake America Student Athlete roster. Handshake America student athletes are a diverse group of high school students who come from different schools, different families, different backgrounds. However, they all share three common traits. The students in the Handshake America program want to continue their education after high school, are coachable, and they have great. So congratulations to those four students that are getting the board and our district that were selected for that. Congratulations to all of the Hades Intermediate School students who successfully competed in the schools first. The amazing shake competition. Students worked for eight weeks to build different skill sets which were tested over three rounds in front of community members, including the Grove City Chief of Police, Realtors, firefighters, and many more professions. The students were tested by being put in unfamiliar improv, round robin, and social situations, including needing to work the room in which they had to use skills, poise, charisma, manners, and social grace to shine. The students were scored throughout three rounds based on the following criteria: charisma, confidence, and poise under pressure, common sense, eye contact, and handshake. At the end of the competition, all the students were recognized in an award ceremony, and Jack H. was named the winner of the whole competition. So, great job. Those are some awesome, just life skills that were able to put, you know, into practice and get recognition for that. That was really awesome. Congratulations to Central Crossing High School student Anna Sinew. Anna has been honored with the Gold Key Distinction for her award-winning submission, which was part of the twenty twenty-three Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Contest held annually by the Columbus, the College of Art and Design. Her artwork, which was entitled "Cultivation of Heritage Will Move On to the Next Level of National Judging in New York City", and also a special shout-out to her sponsoring teachers, Mrs. Emo Hines and Mrs. Lynn. And then moving to Norton Middle School, a recently eighth-grade student Audrey Alves Yasmin Cortez Zerita, Michaela Malone, and Maria Ventura Sanchez were recognized for their artistic submission in the upcoming YAM and YPAE art show hosted by the Ohio Art Education Association at the King's Art Center in March. Yasmin's watercolor landscape and Audrey's watercolor landscape placed top eighty-five in the state of Ohio and will advance to the next round of judging. But congratulations to these Norton Middle School Wildcats and their sponsoring art teacher, Miss Badger. All right, now we've got huge congratulations to the Southwestern Career Academy Robotics Club for qualifying for tournament brackets this past Saturday. The team came in at five out of twenty-four teams at the Mount Burton Dex Robotics Competition, and we wish them all the best when they compete next at the National Robotics Challenge in April. Congratulations to thirty-eight students in the Professional and Technical Sales Class at Franklin Heights High School who earned their six-point industry-recognized retail credential. Way to go, Helen. And our last congratulations goes to Grove City High School senior Isaac Carter, who's recently recognized at the sixty-second Annual Scholar-Athlete Awards being with, hosted by the Columbus Chapter of the National Football Foundation and the College Hall of Fame. Carter was given the Megan Romanoff Award as the top Scholar-Athlete. And then moving on to our Southwestern City School District gets back. I have three awesome things to address here. First, students at Prairie Lincoln Elementary School battled it out by grade level recently with a penny war to buy books for kids at National High School. And all the students raised eighteen hundred and thirty-three dollars. So great job, Prairie Lincoln Cardinals, and I very much would like to know more about what a penny war is. Really good money. And then earlier this month, students at Hope Crossing Intermediate School made Valentine Day cards for residents at Meadow Grove Transitional Care Center. Thank you Rockets for writing to our neighbors across town with uplifting words and encouragement. In recent months, students from Central Crossing High School, Buckeye Woods Elementary School, Hayes Intermediate School, and Jacksonville School were among competition winners and contributors of a canned food drive to benefit the Grove City Food Pantry and Community Service. Thank you all for hanging in there with me. That was a lot, but we had a lot of great things to celebrate with our students and staff this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Martin Dale. Moving on to items for action with the operational management. Mr. Bosso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under fiscal and operational management tonight, we have six items. We'll have to break them up, five and one per vote. The first item on that is revise of permanent appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, which will be Exhibit X-one. Directly with the Board of Education approved the revised permanent appropriations. Item number two, the investments and financial statements for January two thousand twenty-three, Exhibit X-two and X-three. It's recommended in accordance with Section one three five point one four of the Ohio Revised Code. The Board of Education approved the January investment and cash position reports for the month of January as submitted. Total investments, three hundred and twenty-eight million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-four cents. Interest earnings month-to-date, one million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and one dollars and sixty-one cents. Interest earnings year-to-date, three million, nine hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and forty cents. Interest rates varying from point one six zero to four point seven five percent. Item number three, payments of bills. Exhibit X-four, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the payment of bills in accordance with the checks for the month of January two thousand twenty-three. Item number four, donations. It's recommended that the Board of Education accept the donations of ten pounds and two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents as detailed in Exhibit X-five, an authorized letter with appreciation sent to all the donors. It's always appreciated for donors. And I did notice like an eight thousand dollar donor was anonymous. That's always nice to see where people don't even want any recognition for their donations, but they're all appreciated. Item number five, authorizing to pay the bills in accordance with Section fifty-seven oh five point four-one of the Ohio Revised Code. That'll be Exhibit X-six. It's recommended the Board of Education authorize the treasurer to pay bills for January, which were not processed in accordance with fifty-seven oh five point four-one of the Ohio Revised Code. After reviewing these items, Mr. President, I move them for passage.
Second, Schreiner. Mr. Schreiner. Roll call please. Bosso.
Yes.
Schreiner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Martin Dale.
Yeah.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
The other item on fiscal and operational management that had to be voted on separately is the approval of the resolution to file complaints against the value of the real estate property tax for year two thousand twenty-two. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the resolution that's presented in X-seven. After talking to the People Rich and Gillis Law Group I talked to that handles these complaints for, we've heard complaints that when these properties are sold, the value doesn't jive with the auditor's website. So they are, and you can see there's sixty-six pages. They don't go hunting after just people randomly. When these properties are sold, they don't look quite equal when they pop up. This item, I move the passage, Mr. President.
Do you have a second?
I'll begin.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please. Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Martin Dale. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Next, interrations for action. We're killing. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Caldwell. We have one item this evening, and it's to approve our summer school program for this coming summer. The summer school program will run from June seventh to June thirtieth. There's no school on June nineteenth. Locations include both Central Crossing and Grove City, going to Central Crossing. Westland High School students will attend at Westland, Franklin Heights students will attend at Franklin Heights, and all students taking help in physical and closet Central Crossing. Transportation is not provided. I will state that they also have all of the dates in there for the, and of course exams. I would like to point out that there is no charge for summer school this summer for high school. I'm going to review this item. I move the passage.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do you have a second?
I'll begin.
Thank you, Ms. Martin Dale. Any comments? Hearing none. Roll call please. Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Martin Dale.
Yeah.
Bosso.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Next, interrations for action. So these are development back to Mr. Bosso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under action items with fiscal development, we have two resolutions. Resolution first is the Declaration of Existence of Urgent Necessity Authorizing the Waiver of Competitive Bidding Requirements Pursuant to Revised Code three-three-one-three point four-six and authorizing the contract to final floor incorporated or replace the gym floor at the Grove City High School. That floor was damaged during the winter in December when the water line broke. Water got underneath the floor, causing damage, causing staples to pop up. They've been over there week, every week fixing little things so we get through the back of all season. The district is talking with insurers, working with them in response to the water damage emergency and the work proposed by the fine floor incorporated of Sugar Grove, Ohio, a company specializing in repair and replacement of water damage with athletic floors, and have submitted that to the insurance. We're doing this delay in procurement of the contractors and necessity for the material and above work would take an excessive amount of time intended in district's ability to timely approve necessary adequate educational and gym space for students and staff. I've submitted costs on this, two hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. And I knew, well, we got one more though. The other item on that for action and fiscal development would be award the contractor Stroger paving for transportation line improvement phase three. This has been an ongoing project. Bids were received January nineteenth of this year, and Stroger paving won the lowest bid for that total amount of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the project and eighty-one thousand dollars for the alternative A, which would be the parking lot. If you know Southwest Boulevard that runs parallel where the bus drivers park right there. We'll also be doing that. Also recommend an additional forty-seven thousand dollars for owners' contingent seats for unforeseen items and owner requests to change it during construction. After reviewing these two items, Mr. President, I move them for passage.
Second, Schreiner. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please. Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Martin Dale. Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Next, interrations for action. Students, school, and community report. Ms. Martin Dale.
Yes, so we've got six items here. We've got Central Crossing High School, English student requesting to travel to Europe. Central Crossing High School Winter Guard to travel to Indianapolis, Indiana. Central Crossing High School Winter Guard to travel through Kentucky and Dayton. Grove City High School Navy, they are OTC cadets, to travel to Hamilton, Ohio. Westland High School Winter Guard to travel to Avon, Indiana, and membership into the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. In regards to all of the trips that are being requested, I did review all of those, and every single one of those trips would be paid for by boosters, parents, students, and fundraising. And, yeah, that was pretty, you know, yeah, it all fit to me, so I'm going to move the passage.
Do you have a second?
I'll begin.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please. Ms. Martin Dale.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Bosso.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Next, interrations for action. We have our personnel report by Mr. Schreiner.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the board agenda this evening are seven personnel items involving one hundred and eighty-one persons. This includes three certificated administrative resignations, five certificated changes in employment status, ninety-seven certificated employments, eight classified resignations, seven classified changes in employment status, sixty classified employments, and a message of condolences for a deceased staff member, which I would like to read now. David Brant began his employment in the Southwestern City School District on February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, as a bus driver and who has provided transportation for our students since that time. In recognition and appreciation of his service for the students of our district, a motion is in order by the Board of Education expressing deepest sympathy to the family and friends of Mr. Brant, who passed away on January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three. After reviewing these items, Mr. President, I move them for passage at this time.
Please say it. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please. Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Bosso.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Martin Dale.
Yeah.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Next, we'll move public participation relevant to non-agenda items. First, that is going to be Lauren Savage, talking about gym space to the view.
Hello, my name's Lauren Savage. I'm a long-term teacher and coach in the district. Side note, thank you for my amazing science training. Doing things that have a draw to doing in the classroom, so thank you for your support. My goal is to create a fifth-grade travel team for my son and his friends in the community. There are two sport athletes. We would practice in the summer and just play as a winter travel team. And I greatly appreciate the upward organization in Grove City Parks and Rec. But my frustration is, Upward does an amazing job. They've created so many churches. And again, greatly appreciated. They're turning bids away, but they won't have enough gym space, and we're practicing half-court. And I tried to approach Grove City Parks and Rec three times. My practice was canceled because we didn't have a custodian on staff. When I tried to put my son on a Titans team, and this wasn't their fault, when the gym space was lost at the middle schools, my son was practicing at a park with no net and one basket, and didn't have a very good experience and quit. So, the policies I'd like you to consider. And one of these reasons is because as a basketball coach, our kids come, a lot of our student athletes come a little behind. They haven't had as much development as some of the other suburbs. For example, one school this year was thirty-six to six. And the Titans are trying to close that gap with travel opportunities. Policies I'd like you to consider are no summer hours for organizations. The argument's been the custodial issue. There are custodians on staff during the summer. And personally, as a teacher, I had a coach that opened up a practice facility on Saturday for twenty years. I don't understand typically why I get a custodian there to open the building. I've also been told that we cannot share gym space because of building issues. Gym fee is so reasonable. Five dollars compared to seventy-five to a hundred everywhere else I checked. If I can get gym space to offer ten parents a travel opportunity with no profit to myself as a nonprofit organization, it'd be around six thousand dollars. Around twenty-four hundred dollars I could offer to two hundred and forty a person if I can get gym space in Southwestern. And I understand it has to be a huge scheduling ordeal to schedule that gym space. With my son not having basketball, a place to practice, and some of my friends that they're bound to practice in like six to eight at Big Run once a week instead of twice a week, for example, were told that the middle schools were closed down due to construction. And I've spoken with the gym teachers and people, there's no construction. The gym is fully functioning. The gym is fully functional. There's the basketball teams have had their season, the volleyball team has had their season. I don't understand why the community wasn't let in. Same thing with weekends. I know that some of the facilities are open on the weekends, but I told that I could have no weekend access. I happened to go to one of my students in Grove City Parks and Rec, wrecking Saturday at the Rec Center Grove City High School, and it was an amazing use of space. So I thought the maybe solution would be to open up some more direct sellers for community use, allowing teams, more than one team, to share the space because at a gym like Bureau, there's an auxiliary gym, and the gym is huge. You could absolutely split it in threes. There's no reason like three teams couldn't practice at once. You know, a gentleman's agreement to take care of the building solutions. So, again, I'm hoping for access to develop young men as basketball players and as people. I want to thank you for listening. No concern.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Lacher, we'll pull up at the F M D Q, Lisa Brown, as much involved as you might. Next, our agenda. Next, our agenda is Stacy Kelly.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Kelly. I am a resident in the district, and currently have three grandchildren in Southwestern City Schools. I'm also the Quality and Compliance Specialist for Heinzurland Community. For those that may not know, Heinzurland is a residential facility for children and adults with severe or profound intellectual and developmental disabilities. They also have complex medical. Our children are in collaborative classes at Highland Park, Park Street, Jackson, and Central Crossing. I'm here to bring to your attention a disservice that is affecting our kids, your students. When a nurse is not available at school, they cannot attend. Attending these classes is not only important for our students, like every other student, it's important to them. Ninety-eight percent of our kids are nonverbal. Their teachers are amazing, especially when they're working with our kids, helping to improve their communication skills, often with communication devices or other methods of communicating. This is why it's important for them to attend school. It's also important to them. They love going to school. It is their main form of socialization with typical peers and others in the community. They look forward to it and become very upset and distressed when they're not able to attend. This often can't be helped due to illness or medical reasons. When they're not able to attend classes or lack of a nurse, it's all the more disappointing. They have been turned away even after getting to school because a nurse did not show. Were this just an occasional event, I wouldn't be here. However, not having a nurse available to start their gravity feed, G-tubes, is occurring multiple times a month, sometimes for multiple days. This past Friday, we received an email where one of our kids was not able to attend that day. Sorry for the late notice, and will not be able to attend this week too because of an out-of-town family emergency and of the regular nurse there, and they can't promise a replacement. It's my understanding that in these collaboratives, it is a nurse hired through an agency, not the regular school nurse, that starts our kids feeding and give medication as needed. Whenever the agency nurse calls off, these students can't go to school that day. I ask, is this the same with typically abled students? Are they not able to attend school if a nurse isn't available to give medication, a rescue inhaler, or an EpiPen? I understand working with agencies, we do it frequently at Heinzurland. We work with multiple agencies to ensure if one calls off, another can fill their place. We also have residents who attend Columbus Public Schools and Beckley Schools. I don't know how they, their system works, if they have full-time nurses, or if their medication monitors are used. But not having a nurse to start a G-tube feeding is not an issue there. This is not a new issue, but one that keeps occurring with seemingly increased frequency. And what I'm requesting of this board and of the district is something that I do every day at Heinzurland when something goes wrong. And that's an investigation into how many other students this may also be affecting to determine if this is systemic issue or only particular to students from Heinzurland. What factors are contributing to the situation, looking at people, processes, procedures? And then a resolution that will at minimum reduce the frequency of days these students are not able to attend school for lack of a school nurse. Whether it be a full-time nurse at each school, having a backup agency or med monitors that can be trained through delegated nursing to fill this role, or other changes that can occur to prevent this situation in the future. Develop a plan of correction that will enable these students to attend school when they are able and not have to stay home for lack of a nurse at school. Thank you for your time.
Let's go again. Dr. Lacher, can you follow with you after the meeting or tomorrow, whatever it was? Next, we move to items for discussion, board items. Do we have any items for discussion?
President, I just wanted to start with my vote for the OHSAA. You know, the only reason I vote yes for that is because they're the only game in hound, and it would hurt other kids in athletics. But as far as their term, I think it's wrong. I think it's wrong for women's sports in general to be competing with a man. I don't think it goes along with the original intent of Title IX. You know, our own Department of Education voted in December to look at biological sex when dealing with these subjects and vote ten to seven to pass that resolution. I just wanted to put that out there that, you know, it's a vote that it's hard to take, but I got to vote yes on that through the whole district and that's right, the program. I hope our state house maybe one day will have a vote so we don't have to keep arguing issues, but I'm just wanting to put that out there. Thank you.
Any other items for discussion? Hearing none. We'll move to German. You have a motion?
I will begin.
You have a second?
Second.
And roll call please. Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Ms. DeBoso.
Yes.
Ms. Schreiner.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell.
Yes.